Good morning, everyone.
Can you hear me okay? You may want to bring it down a little bit more.
How's that?
It is good.
Better? Okay. Good morning. My name is James O'Connor. I am an attorney from the law firm of Phillips Lidle, LLP, Council for Stamp Sewer Works Corporation, also known as Stamp Sewer Works Inc., a state duly organized New York transportation corporation. I will be acting as the moderator of today's public hearing. Thank you all for coming. The Stamp Sewer Works Corporation, which I will refer to today as Stamp Sewer Works, or simply Stamp Sewer, is holding this hearing pursuant to Section 203 of the New York State Eminent Domain Procedure Law in order to inform the public, outline the purpose, the proposed location or alternate locations, and review the impact on the environment and the residents regarding Stamp Sewer's proposed acquisition of three temporary construction easements over three parcels of real property through the power of eminent domain, one of which is situated within the town of Alabama, County of Genesee, New York, and two of which are situated within the town of Shelby, County of Orleans, New York, respectively, and all of which are adjacent to New York State Route 63 and are depicted on these displays here. More specifically, the first temporary construction easement at issue is in Genesee County and is more specifically described as SBL number 6 dot dash 1 dash 29, commonly known as 6436 Allegheny Road, Alabama, New York. Its record owners are David F. Schloss, S-C-H-L-O-S-S, and Allison H. Adkison, A-D-K-I-S-O-N. The second temporary construction easement at issue is in Orleans County and is more particularly described as SBL number 90 dot 16 dash 2 dash 26, commonly known as 4636 South Gravel Road, Shelby, New York. Its record owners are Donald Quackenbush and Dana Quackenbush. That's Q-U-A-C-K-E-N-B-U-S-H. And finally, the third temporary construction easement, which is also in Orleans County, is more particularly described as SBL number 90 dot 16 dash 2 dash 23 dot 1, commonly known as 11316 Oak Street in Shelby, New York. Its record owners are Brennan O'Connor and Valerie O'Connor, aka Valerie Bloom. And these properties, as I mentioned, are depicted in these maps here. They also were further identified in the public notice of today's hearing. This morning, I may refer to these collectively as the property, the easements, or the acquisition. But at all times, we are only referring to temporary construction easements. We are not referring to any of Stamp Sewer's permanent easements, nor are we referring to any acquisitions of fee title. We are only referring to temporary construction easements. So this morning, we will consider pertinent information such as maps, photographs, descriptions of the easements which Stamp Sewer proposes to acquire. This hearing will inform the public of the project generally. Additional issues to be discussed today include the public use, benefits, or purpose to be served by the proposed acquisition, the location of the proposed acquisition, any alternative locations, the reason for the selection of its proposed location, the general effect of the proposed acquisition on the environment and on the residents of the localities. We also will consider any other factors that Stamp Sewer considers relevant. This morning, we will hear from a speaker on behalf of the Genesee County Economic Development Center, or GCEDC, regarding the public purpose of the acquisition and documents will be offered into the record, which will address those issues in detail. We also will hear from a speaker today on behalf of CPL Architecture, Engineering, and Planning regarding the details of the acquisition, the proposed location for the project, any alternative locations, as well as the impact on the environment and the residents of the localities. And finally, we will hear from a speaker today on behalf of Stamp Sewer Works to address the environmental impact of the project and the proposed acquisition in connection with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SEQR requirements. That's S-E-Q-R. Following these three speakers, any person in attendance today shall be given reasonable opportunity to present an oral or written statement and to submit other documents concerning the proposed acquisition. When we do reach the time for public comments, I will recognize each person wishing to make a statement. I will start with the sign-in sheet. If you did not get a chance to sign the sign-in sheet and still would like to be heard, please raise your hand at the end, and I will recognize you. You can come up at that time. When you do come up to make a statement, please state your name, your address, and your interest in this proceeding, and we may ask you to spell your name for the record for the benefit of our court recorder. You will have up to five minutes to comment on the issues presented this morning. No one will be given more than one opportunity to speak. We will be monitoring the time, and we will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please be aware that this will not be a question-and-answer session. No questions are to be directed to the speakers today or the moderators if there are any written statements considered or submitted for consideration. I will read them into the record at the end of the hearing, depending on their length. And a record of this hearing will show, shall be kept, including any written statements that are submitted. Now, a copy of this public hearing can be obtained by requesting it from Council for Stamp Sewer, which is Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S, Lidle, L-Y-T-L-E, LLP. Attention, James O'Connor Esquire. The address is 1 Canal Side, 125 Main Street in Buffalo, New York, ZIP code 14203. In addition, a copy of the record of this public hearing will be available to the public for examination without cost during normal business hours at three locations. First is the corporation's principal office, which is 99 Med Tech Drive, Suite 106 in Batavia, New York. And that ZIP is 14020. The second location is the office of the Genesee County Clerk, County Building 1, 15 Main Street in Batavia, New York, 14020. And the third place is the office of the Orleans County Clerk, 3 South Main Street, Suite 1, Courthouse Square in Albion, New York, 14411. Upon the conclusion of this hearing and pursuant to Section 204 of the New York Eminent Domain Procedure Law, Stamp Sewer will prepare a report of its determination and findings as to, among other things, the public use, benefit, or purpose to be served by the proposed acquisition and the general effect of the proposed acquisition on the environment and the residents of the localities. Stamp Sewer's legal notice requirements relative to this public hearing have been met through the publication of the public notice in five consecutive issues of the Batavia Daily News, and that occurred between July 11th, 2023, and July 15th, 2023, also in five consecutive issues of the daily record between July 11th, 2023, and July 17th, 2023. The notice was also published in five consecutive issues of the Democrat Chronicle between July 12th, 2023, and July 16th, 2023, and finally, was published in two consecutive weekly issues of the Lake County Media Penny Saver on July 9th, 2023, and July 16th, 2023. Stamp Sewer's legal notice requirements relative to this public hearing have further been met by personally serving the public notice on each assessment record billing owner of the properties and by mailing that notice to each assessment record billing owner by U.S. Postal Service, certified mail, return receipt requested. Stamp Sewer also served the public notice on each assessment record billing owner of the properties by USPS overnight mail, and USPS has confirmed delivery of each parcel. And finally, Stamp Sewer's legal notice requirements relative to this public hearing have also been met through certified mailings and by personal service of the public notice on various entities that may have an interest in one or more of the properties, including easements and/or rights of way. And these entities include Genesee County, the New York Power Authority, the New York State Department of Transportation, and the New York State Electric and Gas Corporation. Okay? Now, our first speaker this morning is Mr. Mark Massey, the Senior Vice President of Operations for Genesee County Economic Development Center, or GCEDC. Mr. Massey, would you please come on up and introduce yourself and spell your last name for the record, if you will. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Mark Massey, M-A-S-S-E, and I am the Senior Vice President of Operations for the Genesee County Economic Development Center, which I will refer to as GCEDC, which has been the developer of the stamp site. I will speak as to the Western New York Science and Technology Advanced Manufacturing Park, stamp or the project in general, and to the public use, benefit, and purpose to be served by Stamp Sewer Works acquisition of temporary construction easements on the properties. I may refer to this today as collectively the acquisition. First, I think I've, whoops, previously submitted document Bates numbers 1 through 7,778 into the record. As previously mentioned, we are here today to discuss Stamp Sewer Works acquisition of three temporary construction easements over three parcels of real property, which will allow Stamp Sewer Works to construct a force main to facilitate the sanitary disposal of treated sanitary wastewater and treated processed wastewater from stamp in the town of Alabama to the discharge point at Oak Orchard Creek in the town of Shelby. Stamp Sewer Works has been able to secure both temporary and permanent easements on approximately 27 properties in order to construct, maintain, and repair the force main, but despite its best efforts, has been unable to secure temporary easements needed for construction of the force main on three properties. These three properties are 6436 Allegheny Road, Alabama, in Genesee County, New York, 14013, SBL number 6 dot dash 1 dash 29, 4636 South Gravel Road, Shelby, Orleans County, New York, 14103, SBL number 90 dot 16 dash 2 dash 26, and 11316 Oak Street, Shelby, Orleans County, New York, 14103, SBL number 90 point 16 dash 2 dash 23 point 1. I will refer to these three properties this morning collectively as the properties. To confirm, Stamp Sewer Works is not proposing to permanently acquire the properties or portions of the properties. Rather, Stamp Sewer Works is proposing to acquire temporary easements to be utilized during construction of the force main over the properties. While the Stamp Sewer Works has reviewed the temporary easements and has determined that these takings will be de minimis under the law, we are holding this hearing to provide the landowners and the public with as much notice as possible and give them an opportunity to be heard today. Overview of the stamp project. The GCEDC has been working for more than a decade on the development of stamp in advanced manufacturing technology campus of approximately 1,262 acres, located on the west side of New York State Route 6377, approximately five miles north of the I-90 New York State Thruway, the stamp site in the town of Alabama, New York. It is projected to attract large-scale advanced manufacturing companies such as semiconductor manufacturers and computer chip manufacturers who require unique facilities to produce their products. For example, Edwards Vacuum selected stamp for the location of its factory-of-the-future semiconductor dry pump manufacturing facility. Edwards plans to employ 600 high-skilled professionals at its facility. Additionally, Plug Power is currently constructing a 45-ton-per-day green hydrogen project facility at stamp, which will be the largest in North America. Plug Power has pledged to create 68 jobs as a part of their project. The stamp generic environmental impact statement, or GEIS, that was completed in 2012 had shown that stamp could accommodate up to 6,130,000 square feet of advanced technology manufacturing, office, and retail space, providing direct employment to over 9,000 people. The Plug Power project is currently paying property taxes to the three local taxing jurisdictions that are between 10 and 25 times what the entire site was paying when it was farmland. Why this location specifically was chosen? The location of the stamp project is essential to the realization of the project. The specific requirements considered for a candidate's site to achieve the basic and overall purposes of the stamp project were analyzed in the stamp generic environmental impact statement, GEIS. As outlined in the GEIS, the GCEDC considered four different sites for the stamp site, including the current site. Alternative sites were considered, including a different location in the town of Alabama, one in Batavia, New York, one in Elba, New York, as well as a no-bid alternative in which the stamp project was not pursued and instead agriculture and residential use of the site develops. As detailed in the stamp GEIS, each of the project's site alternatives failed to achieve the socioeconomic benefits of the stamp project and was accordingly ruled out. The stamp site was chosen specifically for as many assets critical to the project's successful completion. These assets include access to low-cost hydropower. A 600-megawatt electric substation is currently under construction immediately adjacent to the stamp site that will enable a connection to 100% hydropower that can be available to projects at delivered rates that are well below national averages. Access to key brand-new infrastructure including expansive water, wastewater, and natural gas capabilities that are available and supplied by reliable, high-capacity sources. Land availability. The site has over 665 developable acres available, including a 310-plus-acre contiguous parcel for a large-scale project of up to 4 million square feet of manufacturing space. Site readiness. There are approximately 1,262 acres zoned for advanced manufacturing and support operations. The town of Alabama unanimously approved the zoning change in 2012 after the completion of the GEIS. All environmental, archaeological, federal, and state pre permitting fieldwork has been completed and reviewed by regulatory agencies. Full campus utility capacities can be constructed within any project's timelines. Local talent. 2 million people live, work, and play in stamp's 50-minute commute shed with 1 million people in stamp's 30-minute commute shed. Stamp is located near 57 colleges and universities and nine major training centers with over 11,000 science and engineering graduates annually. Access to and from the location. The stamp site is conveniently located near New York State Thruway I-90 in close proximity to three major international airports and has access to rail and the East Coast's largest capacity port. The financial environment of New York State. The financial environment of New York is ideal for this project with a 0% corporate income tax, a 0% personal property tax, and a 0% inventory tax, and with utility and workforce programs and credits to support manufacturing. I'd now like to talk about the location of the force main itself, why the force main is needed, the alternative locations and strategies that were considered, and why none of those alternatives are suitable. During the consultation and design process, several potential locations were considered for the force main and discharge locations. Two potential locations on or immediately adjacent to the stamp site where the Tonawanda Creek or Whittie Creek. However, these alternatives were rejected out of respect of the request of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. The Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge, Oak Orchard Wildlife Refuge, and the Tonawanda Wildlife Refuge were all considered, but after speaking with the managing agencies, it would be too difficult for them to manage the water levels and flow with a potential discharge. Oak Orchard Creek became a viable option, but the discharge point had to be determined. Based on the analysis of Oak Orchard Creek, the discharge point was chosen where the creek opens up wider and deeper to be able to handle up to the proposed 6 million gallons per day of discharge. The capacity of this location was determined based on a hydrology report prepared by J.M. Davidson Engineering that was peer-reviewed by the town of Shelby's engineering firm Wendell Engineering that stated at full discharge the level of the creek would rise by only .2 inches at the most. Later this morning, a representative from CPL will give testimony about why the force main needs to go where it's going and why these specific temporary easements, construction easements, are necessary to support the force main. The benefits to the public. The stamp project will directly result in many public uses, benefits, and purposes, including boosting the economy and local tax bases and creating thousands of jobs. For jobs specifically, the project could result in approximately 9,330 full-time equivalent jobs once it is completed and occupied. The project was projected to generate approximately $531.9 million in direct annual wages at full buildout, and the project was projected to create, to generate approximately $761.3 million in indirect wages. Construction phases were projected to result in approximately 1,400 to 2,900 direct and indirect full-time equivalent jobs with total earnings ranging from $40.8 million to $83.8 million. From an economic output standpoint, the economic output from the stamp project was projected to equal approximately $4.6 billion once the project is completed and operational. This also includes secondary impacts. Tax rates. Property tax rates are projected to decrease due to significant increases in the tax base from the stamp project. Areas impacted include the town of Alabama, Genesee County, and the Oakfield, Alabama, School District. Annual state income taxes are projected to equal approximately $33.6 million once the project is complete. Retail. Retail operations are projected to generate $2.3 million in annual sales taxes for both the county and the state. Why the easements are needed. The easements are necessary to construct a force main sewer line for the stamp project. As mentioned earlier, and as will be explained in detail later, the location for the sewer line is the only feasible location, and it is critical to the development of the stamp project. Without the sewer line, the stamp project will not be developed, and the public uses, benefits, and purposes listed above will not be realized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. I would like to recognize that the Bates numbers 1 through 7,778 that Mr. Massey referenced shall be accepted into the record. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Andrew Kosa, PE, Project Manager for CPL, to come up and speak. Mr. Kosa, would you please come up, introduce yourself, and spell your last name for the record, please?
Good morning. I am Andrew Kosa. That's K-O-S-A. And I am the Project Manager for CPL, an architecture and engineering design firm. I will speak to the Western New York Science and Technology Advanced Manufacturing Park, also known as stamp, project in general, and to the public use benefit and the purpose to be served by Stamp Sewer Works acquisition of three temporary construction easements on the properties. I may refer to this today as collectively the acquisition. As previously mentioned, we are here today to discuss Stamp Sewer Works acquisition of three temporary construction easements over three parcels of real property, which allows Stamp Sewer Works to construct a force main to facilitate the sanitary disposal of treated sanitary wastewater and treated processed wastewater from the stamp site and the town of Alabama to the discharge point at Oak Orchard Creek in the town of Shelby. Stamp has been able to secure both temporary and permanent easements on approximately 27 properties in order to construct, maintain, and repair the force main, but despite its best efforts, it has been unable to secure temporary construction easements needed for construction on three properties. As mentioned before, these properties are 6436 Allegheny Road, Alabama, in Genesee County, New York, 14013, SBL number 6 dot dash 1 dash 29, 4636 South Gravel Road, Shelby, Orleans County, New York, 14103, SBL number 90 dot 16 dash 2 dash 26, and 11316 Oak Street, Shelby, Orleans County, New York, 14103, SBL numbered 90 dot 16 dash 2 dash 23 dot 1. Like Mr. Massey, I will refer to these three properties this morning collectively as the properties. To reiterate, stamp is not proposing to acquire the properties, only to acquire temporary construction easements over the properties. Briefly, I'd like to give some background information. I am a civil engineer and have been employed by CPL for the past 14 years. I have held a professional engineering or PE license since 2008. I have a bachelor's degree I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering technology from Rochester Institute of Technology, also known as RIT. I have been practicing as an engineer for the past 20 years. Specifically, my technical expertise is in site and infrastructure planning and design. I have worked on the stamp project and this force main project since 2009. My role on the stamp project has included design and oversight of the entire site, design and permitting of the required infrastructure, construction administration, and overall project management. I'm going to provide an overview of the force main. First, I'd like to give a high-level description of what a force main is. A force main is essentially an established system of pipes, pump stations, and appurtenances that transport and deposit treated sanitary wastewater and treated processed wastewater. In other words, a force main is one way to dispose of treated wastewater. There are only a few ways to transport and dispose of wastewater. A force main is the preferred option to use when treated wastewater and processed wastewater cannot be conveyed via gravity through regular piping and manhole structures. Now, I'd like to give a high-level description of how that works and assure STAMP Sewer Works and the public here today that it is safe and sanitary. Basically, a force main is a pipeline used to convey sanitary or processed wastewater from the discharge side of a pump to a discharge point. At the stamp site, wastewater is collected onsite and then sent onsite and sent to an onsite wastewater treatment facility. The facility, we use sequential batch reactor or SVR technology to treat the wastewater. Treated wastewater is then pumped from a main pump station through the force main to the discharge point in Oak Orchard Creek. The water running through the force main is already treated. I'd like to transition now to a description of this particular force main. Here, the force main will run approximately nine miles and pump the sanitary wastewater and treated processed wastewater from stamp technology park north to the discharge point at Oak Orchard Creek, approximately 0.5 miles north of Shelby Sector. Next, I'd like to touch on why the force main option was ultimately chosen. Initially, we looked at several alternative routes, including four to five routes transporting wastewater to the Village of Medina wastewater treatment facility and other points along Oak Orchard Creek. However, for many reasons, it was obvious that these alternatives would not work. These routes were longer and were more intrusive to many natural resources and wildlife management areas. These other routes would have been disruptive to the environment and the community. Once it was determined that force main was the only option to support the stamp site, my team and I looked at where we could install the force main. We looked at both sides of the road, options including closer to the roadway, outside of the right-of-way, and et cetera. Due to permitting agencies, New York State DOT permit requirements, actual construction impacts, and construction methods, we determined that the location of the force main shown is the most practical location. Ultimately, the best place to install around the force main is shown on the maps here and the maps included in the record. This is the best location for a number of reasons, including that it minimizes the need for permanent easements in this area, and it leaves the force main within the road right-of-way. Thus, it is actually less intrusive to the landowners here. It minimizes the total area disturbed on the properties, and importantly, it also allows for proper maneuvering of construction equipment, drilling machine, minimizing the disruption to the community during the construction stage. Now, I'd like to provide a few details about this force main. As mentioned, the force main itself will run approximately nine miles, and it will be installed in several phases. The pipe itself will be 20 inches in diameter in the directional drill areas. It will be made of high-density polyethylene pipe, also known as HDP-E. The depth of the pipe varies for the entire project, ranging from six feet to 23 feet, and it will be restored to the existing conditions on the surface. Once it is installed, it will not be visible or accessible to the public. Typically, force mains may need minor maintenance or repairs, but the service life is generally 50 to 100 years. The pipe has the capacity to handle 6 million gallons per day. The water running through it will be treated wastewater, therefore, there will be no odor. All required pit permits have been obtained and are in the written record. During the course of the review process and in consultation with Orleans County, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the DEC, concerns were raised about potential increased erosion at the outlet of the force main, which could potentially bring more sediment into Oak Orchard Creek. We have revised our design plans to address this concern. Despite our best efforts to find alternatives, these three temporary easements are necessary for the force main and its chosen location. Constructing a force main requires a lot of planning and space. We have identified the properties as being necessary for the construction installation of the force main. Specifically, we need temporary access to the property, properties, in order to stage and place directional drilling equipment temporarily during construction. We estimate that the equipment that will enter the properties will include a drilling machine, excavators, a jump truck, or similar construction equipment. There may be 10 to 15 construction personnel on the properties during construction. CPL designed the force main and will be observing the construction, which will be undertaken by Highlander Construction and G. Devin Centis. We looked at alternative locations for these particular sections and portions of the force main, and there are no suitable alternatives. We need to access these properties temporarily in order to construct and install the force main. In total, we estimate the crews' equipment will be accessing the properties for approximately two to three weeks during the initial construction period. After that, the equipment will be removed, and it will be highly unlikely that any crew members will need to reenter the properties until the restoration efforts begin. Restoration includes backfilling all trenches and pits used for drilling or boring, rock hounding, placing topsoil, and hydroseeding or applying grass seed. Restoration will need to take place during seed germination timeframes, generally from mid-April until mid-September. We anticipate that our crews and equipment will need to enter the properties for approximately one to two weeks in order to, in order to restore the properties to the prior conditions. Once the properties are restored, STAMP Sewer Works will no longer need to enter the properties, and the temporary easements will expire. In the future, STAMP Sewer Works will be able to repair and inspect the force main from the road right-of-way without reentering the properties. To summarize, STAMP Sewer Works' use of these temporary easements will have minimal, minimal impact on the environment, if any at all. STAMP Sewer Works' use of these temporary easements will result in minimal disruption to the community and/or to the respective landowners, given that it will only be onsite for a total of approximately four weeks. Any change to the landscape will be restored, and the temporary easements will expire at the conclusion of the construction, and at latest, they will expire in October of 2024. Lastly, I would like to reiterate the importance of the acquisition on the force main project and the stamp project as a whole. The location of the force main is essential to the realization of the stamp project, and these three temporary construction easements are essential to the construction and installation of the force main. Without these temporary construction easements, development of the force main and the project as a whole would be jeopardized. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of CPL regarding the stamp project.
Thank you, Mr. Kosa. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Matthew Fitzgerald Esquire to speak on behalf of STAMP Sewer Works. Mr. Fitzgerald, would you please come up, introduce yourself, and spell your last name for the record?
Thank you and good morning. My name is Matt Fitzgerald, F-I-T-Z-G-E-R-A-L-D. I'm an associate in the law firm of Phillips Lidle, L.L.P., counsel to the Genesee County Economic Development Center, GCEDC, as well as STAMP Sewer Works, with respect to environmental review and permitting for stamp. I will speak today to the environmental review that stamp has undergone since its inception to the present day, as well as to briefly summarize some of the environmental permitting that has been, been completed with respect to the force main. The GCEDC has been working for more than a decade on the development of stamp, an advanced manufacturing technology campus on approximately 1,262 acres located on the west side of New York State Route 6377, approximately five miles north of the I-90 New York State thruway, which I'll refer to as the stamp site, in the town of Alabama, New York. In conjunction with its obligations pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which I'll refer to as SEQR, S-E-Q-R, the GCEDC as lead agency issued a positive declaration for stamp in 2010, followed by preparation of a draft and final scope, also in 2010. A draft generic environmental impact statement in 2011, which I'll refer to as the 2011 DG-EIS, a final generic environmental impact statement in 2012, which I'll refer to as the 2012 FG-EIS, and a written finding statement made also in 2012, which I'll refer to as the 2012 findings statement. The 2011 DG-EIS and the 2012 FG-EIS evaluated an extremely broad range of potential impacts associated with rezoning the entire stamp site from agricultural residential use to industrial advanced manufacturing use, and with constructing and operating 6.13 million square feet of advanced technology manufacturing uses at full buildout, providing direct employment for over 9,000 people. Specific types of manufacturing analyzed included, but were not limited to semiconductor, flat panel display, nanotechnology, pharmaceutical and biotech, medical device and imaging, and photovoltaic manufacturing, among others. The stamp site's infrastructure improvements analyzed in the 2011 DG-EIS and the 2012 FG-EIS included additional water and sewer infrastructure, improved roadways, improvements to sewer, gas, and telecommunications infrastructure, and associated improvements with the goal of developing a world-class, high-technology manufacturing center. The DG-EIS analyzed impacts to geology and topography, water resources, air resources, terrestrial and aquatic ecology, technology industry health and safety, traffic and transportation, land use and zoning, utilities, including water, wastewater, electric power, natural gas, telecommunications, and renewable energy, community facilities, community character, historic and archaeological resources, and agricultural resources, among others. Following completion of the 2012 FG-EIS, the GCEDC issued a comprehensive findings statement that spanned 62 pages, imposing a wide array of mitigation measures to reduce stamp's impacts upon surrounding areas, including establishment of a 300-foot buffer, later increased, increased to 500 feet or more in some areas around the perimeter of portions of the stamp site. The 2012 findings also certified that, consistent with social, economic, and other essential considerations from among reasonable alternatives evaluated, stamp avoided or minimized adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable. In conjunction with permitting for stamp with the New York State Historic Preservation Office, United States Army Corps of Engineers, and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, which I'll refer to as the DEC, GCEDC worked to address any concerns raised by neighbors of the stamp project, including the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, with respect to the development of stamp. In 2016, GCEDC evaluated various proposed changes to stamp, some of which were in, were in direct response to concerns raised by the nation. Relevant here, these changes included, at that time, rerouting sewer discharges from Whitney Creek to the Village of Medina wastewater treatment facility. The 2016 SEQR update process analyzed the potential environmental impacts of these changes and included a detailed analysis of a prospective tenant's proposal to construct a 600,000-square-feet, large-scale, commercial manufacturing facility to develop component parts for solar cells on a 105-acre portion of the stamp site, employing up to 1,000 employees. While this project never came to fruition, GCEDC nevertheless continued to work to implement the other stamp changes, including the new wastewater mitigation measures. In 2020, GCEDC analyzed additional stamp changes, including the construction of a wastewater treatment facility on the stamp site, construction of a force main sewer line to convey up to 6 million gallons per day of treated wastewater to Oak Orchard Creek just upstream from Medina, construction of a new water main to bring water to the stamp site from Niagara County, and the development of an approximately 20-acre parcel located north of stamp for an electrical substation. In 2021, GCEDC analyzed Plug Power Inc.'s green energy development project, which consists of the construction and operation of a hydrogen production, storage, and transportation facility known as Project Gateway on the stamp site. In 2022, GCEDC considered additional studies and documentation that have been completed since the 2020 SEQR update to evaluate the proposed stamp wastewater treatment facility, force main, substation, and power line reroute. In 2023, GCEDC evaluated the potential environmental impacts of the development by Edwards Vacuum of a new proposed approximately 255,000-square-foot machine and assembly hall, together with office building space, together with a future phase in which Edward Vacuum is anticipated to construct an additional approximately 255,000-square-foot addition to its proposed development, all located on approximately 80 acres of land east of Crosby Road and north of Stamp Drive, as well as the construction of up to three distribution and/or manufacturing buildings by Scannell Development, as well as infrastructure necessary to support the same. The force main that is the subject of today's hearing has undergone extensive environmental review. During the GCEDC's 2020 and 2022 environmental reviews of the force main, GCEDC completed numerous studies documented in the record, which were also reviewed by independent state and federal agencies, including both DEC and United States Fish and Wildlife Service, including a discharge analysis confirming that the force main's discharge will not adversely affect Oak Orchard Creek or downstream structures or facilities. Potential impacts to the stamp site, neighboring properties, the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge, Oak Orchard Creek, and downstream communities were all extensively considered and avoided. In addition, pursuant to DEC Commissioner Policy 29, GCEDC prepared and participated in an enhanced public participation plan with the Tonawanda Seneca Nation regarding the project. GCEDC also completed an assessment of impacts to the Tonawanda Seneca Nation from the development of the stamp wastewater treatment facility above and beyond the analysis completed in the 2020 and 2022 SEQR reviews, with concurrence from the DEC and the State Historic Preservation Office that no adverse impacts would result from the development of the same. Following completion of the CP29 process and GCEDC SEQR reviews, the DEC issued all permits and approvals necessary for the construction of the force main, including but not limited to a speedy discharge permit with effluent limitations to avoid any adverse impacts to Oak Orchard Creek, an Article 24 freshwater wetlands permit, and design approval for the force main itself. In sum, the SEQR record clearly shows, and both GCEDC and the DEC have explicitly concluded, that taking into account social, economic, and other essential considerations, the GCEDC has avoided or mitigated all adverse impacts of stamp's development to the maximum extent practicable in its role as lead agency for the project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. I will note for the record that upon completion of the SEQR termination, it will be added to the written record. We have now reached the portion of the hearing for public comment. As a reminder, each person who wishes to speak, given the number of people, will have five minutes to speak. We will give you a 30-second warning prior to the expiration of your time. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer session, and we will be monitoring strictly all statements to ensure compliance. If anyone has written submissions, we also will accept those, and I would note for the record that over the past several days, we've received approximately 17 to 18 written submissions, which shall also be included in the record and duly considered. Turning to our speakers now, I'm just going to go down the list. The first speaker here is Evelyn Eve Wackett.
My name is Evelyn Wackett, W-A-C-K-E-T-T. My friends call me Eve, and I'm very short. I did submit a written statement, which I will read here, so it'll be in the record hopefully twice. I'll read this first, and then I'll make some comments. I wrote this back when we had the first public meeting. My name is Evelyn Wackett. I am a licensed wildlife rehabilitation specialist. I recently attended a public hearing in Alabama, New York regarding the Western New York Stamp Industrial Park development. I am very upset about the location of this project. Smack dab in the middle of Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge, Tonawanda Seneca Nation, and several other wildlife management areas. I am very concerned about the effects of the stamp project on the environment and the migration flyway area of the National Wildlife Refuge and surrounding communities. The idea that they're going to pump wastewater across the refuge and into Oak Orchard Creek outside of Medina is disturbing, and I don't think Medina likes that idea either. This area is very important watershed for Great Lakes. This area is the sixth Great Lake. All the proposed traffic and lighting and construction noise will destroy the environment. It already has. Please reconsider the location of this project. I have been birdwatching in this area since I was a young child, and I have fond memories of my mother showing me the great blue herons, the owls, and other wildlife that depend on a clean, sustainable ecosystem. The habitat is being destroyed, and the endangered short-eared owl and threatened northern herier are at even more risk if this development continues. The native peoples that rely on the medicine plants and the animals of the big woods that are on the west border of this area are at risk of extinction, too. I understand that the first company on the property is Plug Power, and they are developing green hydrogen fuel cells. My question is, where do they get the water that they will use? Will they truck it in or suck it out of the swamps and the creeks? I support green energy alternatives, but not at the expense of green spaces. Thanks for hearing my concerns, Evelyn Wackett. That's what I wrote back in May. I'm here really to, I'm here really to represent the owl and the wildlife that needs this, this area, these wetlands that are important to all of us. This being- This being a national wildlife refuge, I cannot stomach the idea of what has already taken place outside of the refuge. On Mother's Day, I brought a friend here, and we drove past the stamp plant, and I followed the lines all the way out, and I could see where they put railroad ties across the marshes so they can get their big equipment out there to put their big poles up out there. All I can say is, it just seems to me, as an outsider, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an environmental expert in any way, and I don't understand all this permits and legal jargon. But I do know this, that what I seen on Mother's Day out there should not have already happened. And I feel that the idea that we were in our COVID slumber, all this stuff got pushed through, all this agenda got pushed through without the general public knowing. And most people I talked to about this project know nothing about it and seem very upset, as I am, about what has already taken place. So, on behalf of the short-eared owl, which, according to the information that I've already read, has already disappeared from the area. And, you know, the more development that seems to take place, the more you're chasing wildlife out of the area. So I don't think the stamp project should be here at all. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. The next person is Sue Peace. Would you like to come up?
No, I'm not going to.
Okay. The record reflects that she's opted not to make a statement. The next person looks like Mark Bosberg.
I'm going to sit too.
Sit, okay. Mr. Bosberg has opted not to provide a statement. Next is Joe Cardone.
Good morning. My name is Joe Cardone. I'm a lifelong Orleans County resident and resident of Shelby. And frankly, I say shame on Genesee County about how this is happening. Genesee and Orleans County have been allies for centuries now. We've had many common projects and shared many services. But what has happened here and the manner in which it has happened is most disturbing. This project may be a great project in terms of what it may do for our economies in various parts of Western New York. But from what I'm hearing of this situation, it involves Orleans County really bearing the brunt of the project in the form of having to take on all the wastewater that this project is going to create. I don't know what benefit Orleans County receives from that. I don't know why Orleans County wasn't brought to the table on a lot of the planning that's occurred here. And frankly, I don't know why Orleans County would want to accept 6 million gallons of wastewater. We know very little about the quality of the wastewater. You're saying you have looked at other options in terms of where this wastewater could go. If in fact, the quality of the wastewater is as you represent, perhaps it could go into the Erie-Barge Canal to better control water levels. But I haven't heard anything about that. It's upsetting to us in the sense that, if you know anything about Orleans County, the Oak Orchard River really is the lifeblood of Orleans County. It helped to develop Orleans County well before the Erie-Barge Canal was ever established. We don't know the long-term effects of what it is that you're proposing to do. But we do know that it is to our detriment for the benefit of Genesee County. And that's never been the spirit or arrangement our two counties have enjoyed over the years. So I would ask you to reconsider what it is that you're doing with respect to this wastewater. As I understand it, this Forest Main is not anything that can be accessed by any of the residents of Orleans County or any of the projects that Orleans County may have, and that it compromises other projects that Orleans County may have. Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine. I can't read the last name.
Zinni.
Zinni. Could you just state and spell your last name, please, and identify who you're speaking on behalf of? That'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Christine Zinni, Z-I-N-N-I. I'm speaking as a teacher, as a concerned citizen, as an ally of the Seneca Nation, and as an ally of wildlife in the Wildlife Refuge. My father, Nicholas Zinni, whom some of you know, was a lawyer and pilot. We flew over, not only flew over, but visited the Wildlife Refuge every week continuously. So this is very concerning to me in that regard. A nine-mile pipe through the Wildlife Refuge with effluents going into a sensitive watershed, a Wildlife Refuge that is one of the largest in the Northeast. It doesn't seem like it's been thought through very well. And I know, I understand that this has been in the works, as you say, since 2010, 2011, 2012, with all of the... But it seems as if, and it's been addressed in bits and pieces, to the effect that we are, at least if I can speak for some of my friends and people here, concerned citizens, like frogs and boiling water at this point, and hostage to large multinational corporations that have already, you know, in behalf of Genesee County, Genesee County, the GCEDC, the investment is enormous. So the pressure is on, the heat is on. But my question is this, and I have many questions. It's supposed to be a green energy site. I've heard tell that there's going to be a distribution center for trucks, diesel trucks, 500 perhaps, a week, a month, a day. How does that square with a green energy site? The jury is out on green power, green hydrogen power, as far as I know from my research as a teacher, as a scholar, on the effects on the environment, finally, that it may enhance, in fact, CO2. There's a lot we don't know about it, and that's how this has gotten pushed through, one of the ways. And I would just say that I also would like to know how GCEDC has... It's presented its case very well with facts and figures in one regard, you know, the studies. But to say that it's mitigated all adverse impacts on the Wildlife Center and on the Seneca Nation does not seem quite right to me or correct. Because I know for a fact the Seneca Nation has been standing up and speaking about the impacts. So I'll just... I'll say that I hope you will consider and hear our position and how it will affect, finally, all of us in this region. The Seneca Nation, as a teacher, I know that nationwide, here in almost every college, we are all prophesying our introductions to our classes. There are statements, if you look on college websites, about how we honor the indigenous people, the Haudenosaunee of this region, how we acknowledge their presence, and how we acknowledge that we inhabit their lands. This is part of their land, and they have something to say about this. Are we listening? Has GCEDC responded to the concerns? Is that informed consent? Okay, so that's what I have to say about this. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you again for your comments. Next, Jen Persico. Could you just spell your last name and identify who you represent with?
Certainly. Thanks. Good morning. My name is Jen Persico. That's P-E-R-S, as in Sam, I-C-O. I'm the firm Lipus Mathias, and I represent the Orleans County Legislature. I do have a written submission, which I will hand up right now.
We'll accept this into the record. Thank you very much.
I emailed it to you as well.
Thank you.
I listened to the presentation with great interest, and then I thought, I'm in the wrong place. I thought we were here for a Stamp Sewer Works public hearing. But all I've heard from is about what the GDEDC has done. I think that we've heard a lot today about what the GDEDC has accomplished and the review that they have done. But we haven't heard anything about the Stamp Sewer Works. As is more formally set forth in our papers, the GDEDC is an industrial development agency, and as such, does not have the authority to impose its will on a different county, i.e. Genesee County imposing its will on Orleans County. In essence, and as is further set forth in our submission, the Stamp Sewer Works is really a sham corporation that was created improperly to do that which the IDA, the GDEDC, can't do. We've heard from... We heard from the GCEDC a lot. We heard from CPL, who was, I think, the architectural planning firm they work for, GCEDC. They don't work for Stamp Sewer Works. We've heard about the contract with D-Vincenzo. I think I spelled that properly. That contract is worth $9.7 million, as is set forth in our submission as of March 31, 2023. Stamp Sewer Works' balance sheet, it had $25,000. So it seems interesting to me that Stamp Sewer Works is holding a public hearing to complete a project that's going to cost at least $12 million, $15 million, and it has $25,000. I think you'll see from reading our submission that these three parcels that Stamp Sewer Works is attempting to take easements over are not contiguous to any other property that Stamp Sewer Works owns. The easements that were referred to, the 27 easements, those were obtained by the GCEDC. I don't know that they have been transferred to the Stamp Sewer Works. But if that happened, it happened since June 1 of this year. So it would seem to me that if you look at the evidence and you look at the money, that really this is a project and a hearing being controlled by the GCEDC and not the Stamp Sewer Works. I think that these proceedings, the eminent domain proceedings that we're here for today, which your firm Phillips Lidle is conducting, were authorized by the Stamp Sewer Works, theoretically, on March... No, that's not right. They were authorized by the Stamp Sewer Works in April of this year. But interestingly, the very same agreement with Phillips Lidle was approved by the GCEDC on March 2, 2023. That proposal to conduct these proceedings had an estimated cost of $70,000 to $90,000. Again, Stamp Sewer Works has $25,000. I want you guys to get paid as much as anybody else. But that money's going to be coming from the GCEDC and not from Stamp Sewer Works. So in sum, while eminent domain proceedings are certainly permitted where there is a public purpose, where that public purpose is illusory or undertaken in bad faith, they're not permitted. And it certainly would seem, based upon the evidence, based upon following the money, that this hearing is really an attempt by the GCEDC to finance a project in a county outside of its boundaries, which, as you likely know, is prohibited by the general municipal law. So in sum, it seems as though the Stamp Sewer Works is really just acting on behalf of the GCEDC and therefore does not... Let me back up a minute. The GCEDC created the G... There's a lot of words out here. The GCEDC created the GG LDC, which is a nonprofit corporation. That company formed the Stamp Sewer Works in January of 2021. The GG LDC... Am I going slow enough? The GG LDC was improperly formed. There is no authority, and in fact, there is a prohibition against industrial development agencies forming that type of nonprofit corporation. Since the GG LDC was improperly formed, it can't form a separate corporation. Meaning, since the GDEDC formed the GG LDC improperly, then the GG LDC formed the SSW improperly. See if we can follow that one. So at its core, it seems as though the Stamp Sewer Works is an invalid corporation and has no authority to do business in the state of New York, nor to undertake eminent domain proceedings. There is no demonstration by the Stamp Sewer Works of a public purpose for it to take via eminent domain these three random, non-contiguous easements. It doesn't have anything in the works. It doesn't have a contract. It doesn't have any land. It doesn't have any plan. None of the SEER review was done by SSW. It was only done by the GCEDC. So as far as this particular public hearing is concerned, there does not seem to be any public purpose for... Thanks. There doesn't seem to be any public purpose for the SSW to take these easements. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and for your written submission. Thank you very much. Next person is Michael Dobell. Could you just spell your last name and identify who you represent and are speaking on behalf of?
Yes. Good morning, Michael Dobell. That's spelled D-O-B-E-L-L. I'm the chief executive officer with Orleans County Industrial Development Agency. I had submitted a written packet of comments to your wonderful court recorder previously, so I should have those on record for you, Mr. O'Connor. I am here today to voice the concerns about the planned discharge of stamp's wastewater in Orleans County. With this packet, you will understand the support of the agency's position, our joint initiative with Orleans County Legislature to oppose the attempt to acquire by eminent domain two property easements in the town of Shelby, Orleans County, for construction of a nine-and-a-half-mile wastewater pipeline of a nine-and-a-half-mile wastewater pipeline from Stamp into Orleans County. Let me begin by stating, we are not opposed to developments that are occurring at Stamp or the Stamp site in Genesee County. We are here specifically to speak towards the wastewater being discharged at Oak Orchard Creek in Orleans County. As representatives working on behalf of Orleans County residents and business owners, our mission is to foster economic development in Orleans County. It would be inconsistent with our mission to support a project that threatens to compromise our local infrastructure capabilities and is projected to erode the county's recreational waterways. Construction of the pipeline is designed to discharge 6 million gallons of stamp's wastewater into Oak Orchard River daily. The final discharge point, Orleans County, Town of Shelby. The volume and velocity of water in Stamp will increase pollution and erosion in the waterway and hinder the capacity of Oak Orchard River to handle discharge volumes from Shelby and the Medina Business Park. The project also threatens to increase flooding throughout Orleans County from Medina to Point Breeze. For these reasons and more, our agency and the board of directors oppose Stamp Sewer Works invoking eminent domain to acquire construction easements in Orleans County. In conjunction with Orleans County Legislature, we have acquired joint easements for both properties of the Quackin' Bushes and O'Connor's reference in today's hearing. The purpose of our easements is to preserve the economic development opportunities for Orleans County and to protect Oak Orchard Creek. We have determined that our acquisition of these easements is for public use and for public purpose. These easements expressly prohibit access to either property for the construction or installation of any pipeline or related facilities for Stamp without the prior written consent of Orleans County and the Industrial Development Agency. In our view, easements of other properties in the surrounding area violate general municipal law. Should Stamp Sewer Works or any affiliate entities proceed with invoking eminent domain, we intend to contest those actions. It should be noted that no consideration was taken to residents of Orleans County, the IDA, Orleans County Legislature, as relates to the Sewer Works Corporation and the project of the wastewater coming to Orleans County. OEDA and our board of directors have worked to support county residents who were unaware of the project. They are forced to comply when they could not advocate for themselves. The purpose of this joint effort is to preserve our tributaries for tourism and recreational use and to ensure that infrastructure remains available for business development and opportunities in Orleans County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Your statement will be part of the record along with the written submission. Our next speaker is John Welch. John Welch? No comment? Okay. No comment from Mr. Welch. Next is Alex Eaton. Could you just spell your last name and identify who you represent, please?
Good morning. My name's Alex Eaton, E-A-T-O-N. I'm an attorney with the law firm Lipus Mathias. I represent the Orleans County Legislature along with Ms. Jen Persico. I agree with everything Ms. Persico said. Firmly believe that Stamp Sewer Works is acting as a front for the GCE-DC, and I oppose the project on the same grounds as what Ms. Persico just stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, she's already standing. Jill? You can spell your last name, identify who you represent for the record.
Good morning. My name is Jill Heaps, H-E-A-P-S. I'm an attorney with Earth Justice, and I'm here representing the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. I request 11 minutes to speak because that's equivalent time to what GCE-DC was given. GCE-DC is not the applicant here and cannot be given more time to support this project than those are given to oppose it. I also have written materials to submit. There are three main points I'm going to cover today. First, Stamp Sewer Works has no legal right to obtain private property through eminent domain proceedings for the proposed wastewater outfall. Second, the sewage plant, the outfall pipeline, the discharges, and the additional development will have significant negative environmental impacts. And third, there is no public need or benefit for this project. Stamp Sewer Works was created under the Transportation Corporation law, which does provide that legitimate sewer works corporations may condemn property that are necessary for the purposes of incorporation. Transportation Corporation law, Section 121, says that sewage works corporations shall supply each town wherein such corporation operates and the inhabitants, inhabitants therein, with facilities or make provision for the collection, treatment, and disposal of sewage. Stamp Sewer Works is not supplying the Town of Shelby, nor the Town of Alabama, nor any inhabitants, which are people who live in that place, with any sewer, with any sewer lines or collection, treatment, or disposal of sewage. State law defines inhabitants as people living in a particular place, not as corporations operating there. Because the industrial facilities that are occupying the Stamp facility and industrial facilities building there in the future are not inhabitants, there is no legal right for Stamp Sewer Works to condemn any property to build this outfall pipeline. Second, the discharge is illegal under the Clean Water Act because this is a new discharge of phosphorus into an impaired waterway that is impaired for phosphorus. Under the Clean Water Act, new discharges of a pollutant are not allowed unless there is a cleanup plan that shows that the new discharge has, is allowed under that cleanup plan. There's no cleanup plan for Oak Orchard Creek. The nation has been saying this for over two years that this discharge isn't allowed. The state DEC suggested that there might be an opportunity that the, that there could be some sort of trading, pollution trading, between the Stamp facility and the pollution that's in Oak Orchard Creek, even though studies from 2009 show that the phosphorus pollution is not coming from the Stamp site. It's coming from Kafo's and the Muklins upstream. And just on July 10th, DEC realized that the nation was right, and lo and behold, there's no way to offset the pollution, the phosphorus pollution that this new discharge is going to create with somehow like change in land use at the Stamp site. In fact, the 2000, the July 10th letter from DEC also explained that because the new sewage plant that they're planning to build is so small, it's actually not even authorized under the existing permit. The original basis for the speedies permit no longer exists. You can't build an outfall pipeline where the discharge is not allowed. Stamp Sewer Works has never analyzed the impact, envisioned 6 million gallons on Oak Orchard Creek, and it can't do so because it has no idea what facilities might come and build on the Stamp site. Further, the amount of discharge that would be coming from Stamp Sewer Works at most is a million gallons a day, but they're still putting in a 6 million gallon pipe. That means the vast majority of discharge here is from, is industrial wastewater discharge. This project failed the Smart Growth Public Infrastructure Policy Act by encouraging sprawl, an environmentally harmful development. The portion of the pipeline, 2.7 miles that are going through the wildlife refuge, is actually illegal because the pipeline is being used for an economic purpose, and the pipeline does not contribute to the refuge's purpose of providing habitat for migratory birds. Uh, let's see. The Stamp Sewer has failed to examine the extent to which the project will disproportionately impact disadvantaged communities. The nation will be disproportionately harmed by the development at the Stamp site, bearing the brunt of all the negative harms of the noise, truck traffic, air pollution, and wildlife impacts. Let's see. Stamp Sewer has failed to examine alternative options for meeting sewage needs for the employees working at the Stamp site. Stamp Sewer has not explained why the sewage needs for the Stamp site cannot be met with a septic system. Indeed, Stamp Sewer's most recent basis of design estimates 20,000 gallons per day of average flow. They're building a 6 million gallon per day pipeline for 20,000 gallons of flow, and that's assuming 570 people working there, flushing toilets, and taking showers, plus an extra 10 gallons per day per person, and then quadrupling that to allow room for growth. Flow is closer to 10,000 gallons per day based on 411 employees. Plug power will only have 68. Also, there are problems with the engineering of the pipeline. Pipeline force main engineering depends really closely on the volume through which, of what you're putting through the pipeline. So if you have large volumes, you get a large pipeline. If you have small volumes, you get a small pipeline. Stamp Sewer only needs a very small amount, yet they're building this vast pipeline just as an excuse for industrial dischargers to go through. There are some huge problems with the engineering that were identified by CPL on the 2016 basis of design for the force main that were not resolved in the final approved basis of design. There's no public need or benefit for this project. The force main is a pretext for private benefit to individual industrial facilities. There is no need for 6 million gallon a day sewage outfall for stamp tenants. Instead, Stamp Sewer has created a vehicle to pre-build a wastewater outfall pipeline for industrial facilities at Stamp. The industrial facility at Stamp would have no condemnation power on their own to take private land for their public gain, for their private gain to build their own wastewater pipeline. Stamp Sewer Works, created by GCE-DC to get around this limitation, should not be allowed to take private property for the sole benefit of industrial facilities at Stamp. Let's see. There's no need for this massive pipeline. There's no need that they couldn't meet, even if the economic development goals are something that is a public benefit, there's been no showing that you couldn't meet those economic development goals in other ways that do not provide these massive environmental harms. The treated sewage would make up no more than 17% of the total volume of the discharge that the pipeline would convey, which means the majority of this pipeline will be for private benefit. And I have significant, there's also materials that I submitted about the economic waste involved in this Stamp site as far as the giveaways for plug power cost taxpayers $4 million per job, and this infrastructure is a $26 billion giveaway to pre-build a pipeline with hopes that somebody might come there and want to use us. This is the field of dreams of if you build it, they will come, but that's not what condemnation is for. This is for, should be for public benefit, and it's not. And I rest in the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Welch. Your statement and written submission will be part of the record. Our next speaker is Margot Valenti. You can just spell your last name and identify who you represent, please.
Yes, of course. Good morning. My name is Margot Valenti. That's V-A-L-E-N-T-I, and I am the legal director for Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper. I also have my comments written for you. So good morning, everyone. I wanted to come here this morning to touch base on a few of the arguments of our friends at Earth Justice and to support our friends in the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. I also have three general points. I won't read all of them into the record as it's submitted in writing, but I'll give you a couple of highlights. We've talked a lot this morning about how the easement is temporary, but the burden of this pipeline on these landowners is permanent. This will forever be affixed to their property. They will have to deal with this in perpetuity, so it is much larger than a temporary construction access, despite that that may be what we are talking about today. In addition, my second point is that there really is a lack of a demonstrable need and a clear public benefit. As Jill mentioned, we are talking about if all of the employees shower every day, you're using 19,000 gallons of water, and yet we are building a 6 million gallon per day pipe. Why is the need, where is the need explained for the pipe of this size? What are the future tenants going to be? What pollutants will they be using? What water will they be using? All of these questions remain unanswered, and there is no public benefit. As noted in the March 23rd basis, excuse me, March 2023 basis of design report, the purpose is solely to benefit Stamp plant tenants. It says, quote, "A new onsite wastewater treatment facility will be constructed to treat sanitary wastewater generated by the manufacturing tenants." So this is a private benefit that is unjustly burdening the public. But most importantly, the thing that I want to talk to you about today is Oak Orchard Creek. As you've heard, Oak Orchard Creek is an impaired water body under Section 303D of the Clean Water Act. This essentially means that you cannot load additional pollutants into a water body that is impaired. Oak Orchard Creek is impaired for phosphorus. The sanitary waste discharge will load phosphorus into this impaired water body. And Mr. Massey said this morning that they were granted a speedies permit, and while that is correct, there is a speedies permit from September of 2022. Upon review of the basis of design report, DEC, while has not rescinded the permit, is questioning the applicability of this permit without harm to the creek. And so I would like to read a little bit of that letter from DEC into the record this morning. Again, this is July 10th, 2023, regarding the speedies permit, comments on engineering report plan and specification's submittal. As noted in the fact sheet on page 78 and the responsiveness summary comment part one on pages 2 and 4, the Clean Water Act prohibits issuance of a permit to a new source or a new discharger if the discharge from its construction or operation will cause or contribute to the violation of water quality standards. To justify issuance of this permit, the fact sheet and responsiveness summary identified changes in land use and post-construction stormwater management practices on the Stamp site that could have demonstrated a reduction in phosphorus loading from stormwater runoff to offset the increase of phosphorus load from the treated affluent to the phosphorus impaired segment of Oak Orchard Creek. Discussions between DEC and the permittee subsequent to the permit issuance indicate that the current site drainage does not enter Oak Orchard Creek, thus eliminating the opportunity to achieve the necessary offsets through land use changes and post-construction stormwater management practices implemented on the Stamp site proper. As required in 6 NYCRR 750-2.1F, the permittee must establish facts or corrected information to assess the impact to the permit. So I could go on about the downstream worries of phosphorus to the brown trout habitat and the salmon habitat, which will then hurt our economic and tourism industry, but my major question is that this hearing is premature. If you do not have a discharge permit, you do not need a pipe. If you do not need a pipe, then we do not need eminent domain proceedings, and so unless and until that issue with the DEC is successfully resolved, there is no need for eminent domain proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valenti. Your statement and written submission will be part of the record. Our next speaker, Kirk? Do I have that right? Sir, if you could just spell your last name and identify who you're speaking on behalf of this morning?
Sure. That's Kirk Scirto, S-C-I-R-T-O. My citations are here.
Thank you.
I'm a family physician for the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, and I'm also a public health professional. And on those grounds, I believe very strongly that Stamp Sewer Works should not be approved to acquire these three properties, and that it is requested to take by eminent domain with incorrect use of eminent domain. The acquisition of these three properties serves no public purpose benefit or, or there's no public use to them. They're acting in bad faith by aiming to take property to install a wastewater pipeline, which only serves the interests of private companies, the GCE-DC and their tenants. They're not going to serve any of the residents of the Town of Alabama, the Town of Shelby, and therefore there's no public purpose whatsoever.
No public purpose?
No public purpose. The New York State Transportation Corporation law requires a sewage works corporation to provide sewage services to town residents, yet Stamp Sewer Works does no such thing. Allowing for a wastewater treatment facility and then a pipeline leaving it would harm the public purposes of Stamp's neighbor, the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. They have the nerve to set up an industrial park, or they're trying to, right at the border of this nation. of this nation. Noisy construction on a very smelly wastewater treatment plant right at the edge would negatively affect their nation, scaring away wildlife, disturbing the harvesting of food and traditional medicines in the big woods and old growth forest. It would hinder their ceremonies and potentially harm the water plants, animals, and people through accidental untreated sewage overflows into the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, which is just west of stamp. And of course, the water flows to the west. I'd be quite concerned about seeing a great deal more cases of nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, abdominal pain, fever, rashes. I'd be concerned about the wells of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and their groundwater being affected by accidental sewage overflows. They've expressed their opposition very clearly, and they should be respected as a sovereign nation, rather they've just been completely bypassed and there's been no attempt at consultation, despite what you've heard from the GCEDC. Stamp Sewer Works proposes the dumping of industrial wastewater into Oak Orchard Creek, yet this creek is also considered impaired waterways, you already heard, given the high levels of phosphorus. This would only expand further, leading to harmful algae blooms. Now, who would consider swimming, fishing, or otherwise visiting Oak Orchard Creek for recreation if it smells like chemicals? You know, you heard a claim that treated sewage does not alter smell. You heard a claim that industrial wastewater does not alter smell. That is simply not true. There's a large body of evidence that goes against that. So this is going to harm the public purpose of the use of Oak Orchard Creek. You know, additionally, the permit initially granted by DEC allows for quite high levels of fecal coliform bacteria and chlorine, and these would not be safe for people to be anywhere near the creek, especially in it, for any kind of recreational use. It also would be quite dangerous for aquatic life. Now, this unethical permit also, you know, wouldn't even allow the monitoring of forever chemicals, another hazard. Orleans County infrastructure hasn't been built to withstand the quantity of water, an additional, you know, 6 million gallons per day of wastewater. There would actually be more wastewater in this body of water than the actual natural water that's present there right now, making it more of a sewer than actually a creek. It's a very important body of water. The only purpose for all this harm is to get GCEDC and its tenant companies even more wealthy than they already are. It would not improve the local economy or other public purposes. Job opportunities are only expected for highly specialized workers from distant major urban centers. Stamp Sewer Works does not have the statutory jurisdiction or authority to take over these three properties because they have not demonstrated the necessary approval of the state commissioner of transportation, the Orleans County Department of Health, and the Orleans County Legislature. Far from approving the pipeline, the mayor of Medina in Orleans County has opposed the project all along and has called for an independent evaluation of project design irregularities and omissions discovered by three engineering firms that were actually hired by the GCEDC. Stamp Sewer Works also lacks authority, given that it is found to show that it is a legal entity separate from GCEDC. While applying for this permit, GCEDC uses name interchangeably with Stamp Sewer Works Incorporated and also Stamp Sewage Work Corp., making it quite clear that these are the same people wearing different hats. On days when it calls itself GCEDC, it's not legally allowed to go door-to-door asking for easements in Orleans County, so it conveniently called itself Stamp Sewer Works when it did so. GCEDC is bound to Genesee County, and it didn't get permission from Orleans County to ask for easements there. Also, it's far from clear that Stamp Sewer Works holds all the permits necessary to construct their beloved pipeline. A special use permit is needed from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Actually, I'd like to take 11 minutes, as you mentioned, the GCEDC speakers have used that length of time as well. But I will mention, the actions are also unreasonable. Given the impact on the environment, it has not been evaluated with a comprehensive review. The Seeker in 2012 was mentioned. Again, it wasn't Stamp Sewer Works that did this, and it's far, far outdated. The original plan was to, it written in that Seeker, actually, was to dump the wastewater to a treatment facility in Medina rather than dumping it into Oak Orchard Creek. Stamp Sewer Works drastically understated the negative environmental impacts of wastewater piping in the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge. They admit that their pipeline would need to cross nine federal wetlands in three state wetlands, as well as 11 streams in various drainage ditches. Yet they conveniently ignore the grave threat of the pipeline leakage into these bodies of water, causing harm to aquatic life. Nearly one-third of the stamp wastewater pipeline would pass through this wildlife refuge, where it would use directional drilling to go under streams, wetlands, and roads. This is a highly troubling methodology to use in wetlands. Currently, you see fracouts that harm aquatic life. Also, there's a risk for fuel solvents and concrete leachant and other pollutants to harm wildlife, and also the moving of silt and sediments would be expected to harm them. The area where the pipeline drilling is proposed is home to three endangered species, as well as seven threatened species, including the bald eagle. They're all known to nest on or near the wildlife refuge with the exception of the upland sandpiper. GCEDC admits that four of these species have been documented immediately adjacent to the proposed project area. There are so many reasons to oppose this illegal and immoral use of eminent domain. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sherto. Your statement and written submission will be part of the record. I would note that pursuant to the EDPL, stamp is required to allow reasonable opportunity to submit either an oral or written statement. We are, as a courtesy, allowing both. Our next speaker in that vein is Barb Campbell. She'd like to come up and speak. Campbell, if you could spell your last name and identify who you're here on behalf of.
Sure. My name is Barb Campbell Scirto, S-C-I-R-T-O. I happen to be Kirk's mother, and I'm here because I grew up in Love Canal. And I saw what my community went through and still is going through, and I felt a need to come here and throw my support behind the Tonawanda Seneca people and also the Erie Wildlife Center. I thoroughly oppose what you're doing. It all sounds so good, but so did Love Canal when they built a school on top of a chemical dump. I'm also here to read a comment of someone that couldn't come here. Her name is, can I move some of these? Her name is Anne Marie Zewak, and she submitted this because she couldn't be here today.
Could you just spell her last name, please, if you have it?
Z-W-A-K.
Thank you.
My name is Anne Marie Zag, and I am asking the residents, I'm sorry, and I am a longtime resident of New York State. I am writing to tell you that I oppose this proposal for temporary construction easements and granting Stamp Sewer Works Inc. the power of eminent domain over the three affected properties. I oppose the proposed, I oppose the proposal on the following grounds. The eminent domain proceedings in question lack public purpose or sufficient public, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading this, public person or sufficient public purpose. Rather, the proceedings will exclusively benefit private entities, the tenants of Western New York Stamp. Stamp Sewer Works lacks standing to carry out eminent domain proceedings. New York State law requires a sewage works corporation to provide sewage services to town residents. Stamp Sewer Works is disqualified from applying for permits since it will not do so. Stamp Sewer Works doesn't have the authority to exercise eminent domain properties because they haven't demonstrated the necessary approval of the state commissioner of transportation, the Orleans County Department of Health, or the Orleans County Legislature. Thank you, Anne Marie Zewak.
Your statement as well as the written statement of Ms. Zewak will be in the record. Our next speaker is Karen Jones.
My name is Karen Jones, J-O-N-E-S, and I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, Eric Jones, and myself. We are property owners on Route 63 in Shelby, and we live 1.1 mile from one of the houses listed in the public notice and 1.1 mile from the other house. And in the diagram behind the reporters, that line that indicates the pipeline, our house is on that, yet we have never received any notification from Stamp Sewer Works or from the agencies, Stamp Sewer Works, or GCEDC, or GG LDC. Never have we been notified in writing or anything else about a pipeline going by our house. Now, perhaps they are going around us through the field behind us, but I don't see that in the diagram. Looks like a straight line. In any case, I did present, or I did submit written comments last night. I'd like to add to those comments today. First of all, to ask that we have longer than 5:00 p.m. today to submit comments regarding this issue?
Yeah, the record will be left open.
Till when?
At least until the time that stamp issues its secret determination. So it could be a matter of days, a few weeks, perhaps.
Wow. I mean, I have so many pages of notes right here, there's no way by today, so I'm glad it is extended. I also wanted to take issue with the notice of the public hearing, and I'd like to submit this paper copy of the Lake County Penny Saver, which Shelby residents, this is the only notification we got. The font size is probably four. It's smaller than the ads. And it, I read a lot. This is really hard to read, and we got it listed twice. In Genesee County, they got the Democrat Chronicle, the Batavia Daily News, and something called the, I don't even remember the name of it. I've never heard, some of the daily record. They got four weeks, we got two. The Orleans Hub is what we read. We don't, we read the Penny Saver a little bit, but the Orleans Hub is really our newspaper. It's online, and they have a section specifically designated for public notices. That would be a great place to put a public notice, presuming, of course, that you should have another public hearing about this. None of my neighbors know about this. I heard about 27 residents that signed off on this. I don't know who. I know neighbors that said, no, they're not listed in here either. So, I mean, just the lack of knowledge, so many people in Orleans County have no idea about this. And yet, as I drive to this very hearing, I see the digging continues and the pipe is already there on the south side of the refuge, which I think is an affront, as I said in my letter last night. It's an affront to this process. It makes it look like this is a rubber stamp thing. They call it a public hearing, but where is, where are my Shelby neighbors? They don't know about it. That's where they are. What I heard today and what I read last night that I didn't even include, I know that there was a modification to the original plan that supposedly answered Mayor Mike Sideri's concerns about erosion due to the discharge. And I've read the 2022 modification. It involves something involving riprap and mortar and stones. Okay, so by layering a little bit of stone and concrete, you think you're going to somehow keep the erosion from happening? That defies logic when we're talking millions of gallons of discharge daily. It's going to ruin Route 63, which, by the way, is already a mess. It's, and there is no mention anywhere of who's going to fix this road after the construction and due to the traffic that will continue, you know, from stamp. But again, sticking with this wastewater pipe as the primary issue today, water itself is the biggest problem for the road. Water is already a problem for Route 63. It floods every spring. It flooded, I think, in 2017. A woman drowned in the refuge on the road. 30 seconds from what? Am I up to 11 minutes yet?
If you'd like to take your last.
I would like to take the 11 minutes. I took a lot of notes. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And your statement received last night was received and will be included with the record.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome.
There was a comment by an engineer early on that said something about other points along Oak Orchard Creek were considered, but they were considered more intrusive to wildlife. How is it more intrusive than going through the wildlife refuge? And more intrusive to not a river, Oak Orchard Creek? Creeks are smaller. That means that they're more in danger of pollution, that if you have more water, it's going to dilute more. But, you know, as I said at the hearing in, in May, you know, you can't use the refuge as this filtration system, and it feels like that's the backup plan. A pipe is going to have problems. There's no mention anywhere of, well, what happens when there is a break? What happens when there is sewage discharge and excess phosphorus? We already know Oak Orchard Creek has a phosphorus problem. Kayakers can tell you that if you're up by the wastewater plant in Medina and you row as far as Medina Falls, you're going to find bubbles. We all know what bubbles mean. Don't swim and don't get the water on your skin if you have a break in your skin, because surely there's going to be a problem and there's going to be toxins in the water. You know it from the smell. So adding more possibilities that are more than a possibility, very, very much a likelihood of further damage to an already sensitive waterway that's really important and has had a lot of economic time and resources, and the time being the biggest, we have people that have started kayaking businesses along Route 63 north of Medina. You think they're not going to be impacted? We have people that have started all sorts of things involving fishing and tourism. What about them? What about all the residents who have put their faith in their legislatures that these members that have said, we're going to make sure that our waterways and our way of life is protected? That's what they're talking about, and that's why, of course, their lawyers are here. The numbers that she was quoting, the first attorney for Orleans County Legislature, are shocking. Hearing that GCEDC is actually, oh, they kind of turned into this not-for-profit, GG LDC, not-for-profit, come now. Maybe we should start calling it, instead of all those little acronyms, we should just start calling it Stampgate. So, again, oh, there is one last thing. I'm hoping that this whole proceeding, including every person's comment, is available to the public. The last time I went to the record for the hearing, I saw minutes that there was a hearing, but there was no recorded remarks, even though there was, just as there is today, somebody transcribing the proceeding. So does that mean that the corporation or GDED, whatever, they get a transcript, but we don't, and it's a public hearing? So I am hoping that for the readers among us, we have access to this hearing and the transcript, including all the public comments, available, not just, by the way, in the Genesee County and Oakfield or Alabama or wherever's website, but perhaps on the Shelby Town website, you can provide that, or Orleans County Legislative Page, which is quite comprehensive, and I'm sure you can provide a link. So, thank you so much for your time, and I'll leave the newspaper with you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for your comments and your written submission. Both will be included in the record. Our next speaker today, Jerry Hens? Maybe not reading it correctly. If you could just spell your last name for the record and identify who you're speaking on behalf of.
I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'm Jerry Hens, H-E-N-S, just like a chicken. And I'm here representing myself. And I'm here representing myself and my business, Hens Honeybee Farm. I'm a pollinating insect specialist for upstate New York, which I do as a voluntary job. I'm home-based out of Niagara County. My operation is in four or five counties here in western New York, including the counties we're speaking about today, as well as eight or nine counties in northern New York. And I have some concerns. I happen to be a Seneca myself, but I'm not, I'm in support of the Tonawanda Nation, and the concerns that the public has are the concerns for all of us here in New York State. We have a problem going on in this state right now. We are losing thousands and thousands of acres in this state each year of agricultural lands, as well as environmentally sensitive lands, that are homes for birds, pollinators, wildlife, aquatic life, and so on. They have no voices. I'm here in that capacity to help voice some concerns about what I see going on in this state. Because of what I do, I get into 15 counties in the entire Great Lakes region, all the drainage basin to Lake Ontario, throughout St. Lawrence River area, through the Adirondacks, the Champlain Valley, central New York, the Montezuma area, which, by the way, is suffering the same dilemma that this area is today. There is encroachment by industrial development for high-tech industries that are being done along areas that are environmentally sensitive, and they are our farmlands. Folks, there's only so much land on this planet for us to grow our food. We are squandering it for industrial development when we have brownfields, and we have decommissioned military installations in this state where there are utility hookups, there are wastewater capabilities to deal with things. Those are sites for this type of development. Not our agricultural lands, not our homelands, as a Seneca Nation, or on behalf of the Mohawk Nation and all the rest of the members of our nations in this state and in North America. We are continuing to lose prime lands and our ability to feed ourselves. That's what's going on in Ukraine, folks. Those lands are not gonna be fed for much. We're gonna continue to keep doing that here locally. That's my concern, that these are being sited next to Department of Interior Lands in Montezuma, here at the Iroquois National Wildlife Preserves, and things that are here locally, and as though they're just green wastelands, and then we call it green energy development. But in the process of doing that, we're destroying what we have in those ecosystems and our ability to feed ourselves. Because when we take these soils out of circulation and we continue to contaminate them, we can't replace them. I hear government agencies continue to be talking about, "Well, we'll just replace wetlands." We're losing our marsh lands. We're losing our ability to rejuvenate natural resources that we have here locally. That's my concern with what I see going on. It's going on across the state. It's going across this entire nation, as well as other sensitive places on the planet. It needs to stop. We need to redevelop contaminated lands that we have for this kind of development. That's where we should be citing these things, instead of looking at our agricultural lands and our wildlife habitat that we have around. Some sites that are supposed to be preserves for animals and for bird, and I'm concerned about that, because I'm in my 60s, and I've watched in my lifetime the degradation of the St. Lawrence area for hydro. We do it for industrial solar. I have many acres in Niagara County that have gone, when we said no to industrial solar, and it got shoved there, much the same way that this is being done. It's done in the dead of night. People don't know about it. I found out, thank you yesterday for calling into WBEN Radio and telling us about this hearing. I am not alone. I will submit a statement, but I will give it to you in the next couple of days, because I haven't had a chance to put it all together yet. Please look at other sites for these kinds of development. I am against the taking of eminent domain. I'm a landowner in this state. I'm a farmer. I spent six years on the Niagara County Farm Bureau Board. I'm well aware of what's going on with the loss of our farmlands. It cannot be a trade-off to take away from some of us in our economic development for other people's economic development. That keeps happening. It needs to stop. Our state needs to find a way to keep environmentally sensitive lands, which are often adjacent to where agricultural lands are, and keep them for that purpose, forever, for other people who want to farm and for other wildlife. It's just simply disappearing at a rate that's not sustainable any longer. I get to see 15 counties on, every week to two-week time, visiting my 1,500 counties throughout the state. I make a living producing honeys that are based on wild vegetation from wild ecosystems. I can see the decline that's going on across this state in the name of economic development. It's not about whose political party's in there. It's about the misuse of our lands. Once they're taken out of circulation, they're not there anymore. And I think we have some misunderstanding that we keep thinking we can just keep recreating wetlands. No, we cannot. They're the ones that nature put here, and we need to preserve them and the inhabitants that go with them. Please look for other sites for this type of development, and make sure the public has some role in this, because hearing about meetings, like I heard yesterday afternoon, with very little time to come and talk about what's actually happening, but I see this going on. I'm a tenured environmental educator. I'm a former college professor that taught health and environmental sciences. So I understand all the science of this, and it's not being clearly stated what the losses are. Green space in this state is not a wasteland that somebody else needs to come in and develop for economic development purposes, for industry, whether it's for Amazon warehouses or whatever it may be. Once we take those lands out of circulation, they're permanently out. If they get contaminated, there's no way to effectively clean them. There's no way to replace the marshes that we're losing. Please think about how you can do this project somewhere else where it's more suited to be in an area where it's gonna cause less degradation to the environment. Thank you. My first name is G-E-R-A-L-I-M. I go by Jerry, and my last name is H-E-N-S. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. They will be part of the record. Our next speaker is Leslie. Leslie would like, there's no last name listed. We will circle back at the end then, and see if Leslie wants to speak. Linda? If you could just spell your last name and identify who you're speaking on behalf of.
L-O-G-A-N.
Thank you.
Linda Logan. I'm a member of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, a lifelong resident there, beautiful land. I'm here to support the three residents who are opposing this eminent domain declaration regarding the rural apartment for wastewater pipeline originating from the megasite Stamp Project in the middle of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, our homeland, Tonawanda Wildlife Management Area, Iroquois Wildlife Management Area, Oak Orchard Wildlife Management Area, and John White Wildlife Management Area. This site could also have potential to affect the Tonawanda Creek watershed, the Oak Orchard Creek watershed, and the Spring Marsh Wetlands area. What will the potential environmental cumulative effects be for the future generations of my people? You cannot reverse the consequences of the degradation of Mother Earth, and who will be liable for this? I would also like to comment on the definition of the eminent domain in relation to public good. Plug power provides hydrogen for only forklifts, nothing else so far that I know, which is not a public good reference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Your comments will be part of the record. Next person is Scott Logan.
If you could just spell your last name, please. L-O-G-A-N. My name is Scott Logan. I am speaking in behalf of myself, and I also feel the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, and I also feel anybody who cares for the environment and justice, I guess. I'm also a Seneca language teacher, and I am also a sub-chief for the Bear Clan, for the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, and I am also a faith keeper, which is a religious title, which just makes sure that I keep our traditions, our cultures, continuing. I strongly oppose this, this whole thing, right from the beginning. And I don't mean 2010 beginning, because I had no, no idea, like many of us here. I'm talking about maybe a year ago, when I found out about it, and there's so much, let me tell you the truth, I really didn't have anything written. I didn't expect to speak, but after listening today, I've learned so much. Eminent domain. Being a Houdinishoni person, to me, eminent domain is no shorter, no different than the doctrine of discovery. If any of you are aware of it, the doctrine of discovery was written in a papal bold in the 1400s, which pretty much the Catholic Church Christians gave explorers the right to, if they were to come to a land that was occupied by people, and they weren't Christian, then they weren't considered people. And they could do with what they want with these people and the land, and take it as their own for country and God. So, to me, it's not far from that. We've had court cases in the past where Supreme Court justices have cited the doctrine of discovery, why we can't get land back. I've heard other people say, you know, we are, right now, as we speak, on Houdinishoni lands. You may hear, you know, some people may get sick of hearing, but you may hear, you know, people, Houdinishoni, or native people, indigenous people, talking about land back and getting our lands back. Part of our issues, I guess, is that, yes, we believe our land was stolen, but the second kicker is that, after you stole it, look what you did to it, you know, and you continue to do it. It's a, it's a continuing cycle. And I've, it's very frustrating to hear the learning about, and I thought it was my, you know, my own historical trauma, right? I thought it was my own historical trauma, thinking, oh, these guys are, all these corporations, these big-money corporations are being underhanded, and they did this. They made sure that even way before any of this, these permits and these acronyms got tossed around, that they already were plotting to get that, the endangered owl out of the area, even before. So they, they did their homework. They knew, and I thought it was my historical trauma, being, oh, these guys are being really, you know, cloak and dagger, you know, behind the scenes, look at this hand, watch this hand, well, this hand does all the work, you know, over here, you know, and that's what I, but I'm coming to find out, you guys feel the same way. And it's not my historical trauma. It's probably the truth, right? And so, it's kind of like really discomforting me. And I stood here at the last hearing, and I, I think it should be called a listening, because nobody listens when they have a hearing. I said, we had a lot of people, we were talking to the Department of Environmental Conservation, okay? Environmental conservation. And they thought this was fine. Plug power got denied in Pennsylvania because it was next to a wildlife refuge. I mean, hello? You know, I mean, that's big money. This is all, that's all what this is about. I mean, we all know that it's all just about money. It all boils down to money. There are people that are sitting in the right chairs that don't care about the environment and don't care about these species and don't, because for whatever reason, they don't care. It doesn't affect them. They don't think it's gonna affect them. And everything that I've heard everyone stand up here and saying, I mean, I agree with it. I agree with the lady that lives down the road from what's going on. I mean, you know, she didn't know nothing about it. These residents didn't know anything about it. That's what it's like to be indigenous, you know? Your government's gonna screw you and not tell you about it, and then they're gonna do all this and try and, that's how we've been treated. As indigenous people, that is the treatment that we are used to. I mean, I've heard words that were flown, you know, concepts that I grew up with from my grandparents who were in residential schools. Forced to comply. Welcome to the club. Forced to comply. I've heard that, you know, we're being forced to comply. Eminent domain. Eminent domain. You have your private property, but the government can say, you know what? Eminent domain for the betterment of the people. We can come in and do whatever we want with it. Like you said, forklifts. I mean, it's gonna help somebody. Yeah, I get that. Hydrogen, I mean, I feel like we don't know enough about it. That place blows up? Don't matter anymore, right? I mean, you know, we're kind of after the fact of that. They don't tell you that. You go to the doctor. The doctor scurta will tell you. You go to the doctor, and you go to get your, you go to any kind of procedure, you have to sign this waiver that tells you, oh, yeah, you could die, you know, you could die. This is what, these are the things that could possibly happen. You know, this is what's gonna, they don't tell you that when they do this stuff. It's all, this is what it's gonna help, and it's gonna make this much money, and we're gonna do this, and it's gonna do that. But it doesn't tell you, you know, oh, we did this research in 2012, and we did this research in environmental impact. And the thing with that is, you think you know, but you don't, you know. In, in our language, there's a part of our language that's known as a hypothetical. There's an actual part of the word that you put into the word that makes it hypothetical, which gives it an idea and gives you, it's a, it's a larger feeling, because it gives you the concept of, you know what, we, we may be higher on the food chain on this planet, but we have no idea what's gonna happen with the environment. We have no clue whatsoever. We can't control any of that stuff, none of it. And all these environmental impacts, they're like acting like they can, or they, like they think they know what's gonna happen. And it's ridiculous, because we don't. We're at the mercy of our environment, and we're screwing the environment constantly, and it's gonna screw us back. It is going to screw us back. That's what living in the universe is called. You get back what you put up, and you put this negative energy into it, you put this negative stuff out there, and you lie about it, and you do all this stuff, and it's gonna, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna pay for it. And it's not gonna be that. It's gonna be the residents, you know. I'm sitting here, listening to the lady talk about her land, and it running straight through, and I'm thinking, dang, that's the type of things they did to us in treaty negotiations. They lied. They, or covered it up, or made it prettier than it really is. Take it from somebody who's living historical trauma from treaty negotiations and residential schools and all of that stuff that you're just now learning about, that it's, don't let this happen, if anything. I mean, yeah, there's, it's in the world, right? It's in the world. It's like everywhere this type of thing is happening. Big corporations not caring about the environment, looking towards a goal, and I get, they're talking about renewable energy, and it's green and stuff like that, and, and it's ironic that they call it green, because it's all money, right? I mean, it's all money. And that's basically what it is. And that's what fuels this country. That's what fuels everything. And it's very disconcerning to me as a teacher, because I'm involved with our future. And I'm, I see our kids today. I see our, our native kids. I see the non-native kids. I see, you know, technology and all these things that are coming into play that's affecting the future of our physical environment, because we don't consider the physical environment anymore. And I'm always telling my classes, you know, you keep going that way. And I don't know if any of you have ever seen, it's probably not a very good reference right now, but there's this Disney movie where these people are, in the future, on these little carts flying around, and they can't even, they don't use their body anymore, and they just are on these computerized things, and they, one falls off, and they can't even get up because they've relied so much on technology. And I feel like, that's what we're doing, you know? That's kind of where we're headed. And all of this stuff, all of this, you know, and this, this under, it just feels so underhanded to me. And, I mean, pardon me that I'm frustrated, but I've stood up, I stood, we, a lot of us stood up here in the same spot, thinking that these people were gonna listen and stop this permit for them to go through the wildlife refuge, because, well, it is a refuge for the wildlife, not for pipes, not for anything else. It's supposed to be just for the wildlife. And putting something in there, as temporary or whatever as it is, it's still gonna affect the wildlife. And I just don't, you know, entirely understand. And I oppose it. I also am learning about our traditional medicines, and that area is a very extremely, the Big Woods is an extremely unique area. I've been told by Botanist. I've been told by botanists, I've been told by college professors, I've been told by all these other people that have come and have been interested in it because our area draws, because there's plants that don't grow typically in certain places and they're pretty protected, that, oh, do I get the eleven minutes?
They're, um, oh, until the, oh, shoot. Oh, I mean, hey, guys, I was talking to them. Um, so like, these rare and endangered species are coming to our territory because it's safe. It's like, we keep it pretty much safe. We keep it as environmentally as we can. I mean, yeah, people come and dump stuff, we cleaned up earlier.
Sir, that is your time.
That's my time.
Appreciate your company.
Okay, thank you.
It would be part of the record.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next speaker is Grandal Logan. You can just spell your last name, please.
Of course. So my name is, uh, Grandal Logan, that's L-O-G-A-N. Um, I submitted comments via email, but I'd like to add on to these comments today. So, my name is Grandal Logan and I'm a member of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation of the Snipe Clan. And our people's leadership must consider three things when we make a decision. They must consider the kids whose faces have not yet come from the earth, so therefore the future. They must consider the animals and our impact on them, and we must also consider the environment and our impact on that, something the Americans had not adopted from us when they had inspired their government from the Houdinishoni Confederacy, or Iroquois Confederacy might be easier to type. Um, but enough of the history lesson. We should not count the minimal amount of damage which GCEDC has accounted for. The fact is, there is no way to tell how harshly these things will affect the animals, the plants, or the water in the long term. We're told that this forest main is safe, but anything made by man will break. This would have a negative impact on the wetlands, the watershed, and even if the pipe works as planned, it will be putting affluent water into Oak Orchard Creek, further degrading it, an already impaired water body. I've heard of potential benefits towards jobs, minimal destruction of the community during construction and the like, however, I don't see any public benefit or need, I only see greed at the expense of the environment. In sum, they say that the forest main is safe and that there is no adverse impact, but pipelines break, we know that historically, native peoples all over the place have seen that so far. And I would like to remind everybody here that even the Titanic was promised to be unsinkable and she sits at the bottom of the Atlantic. I would advise against permitting these easements over the affected properties and hope that all of these comments are taken with fairness and justice in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Grandal. Your comments will be included with the record along with the emailed comments that you sent. Um, our next speaker is Deborah. Deborah Loki?
Deborah what?
L-O-K-E.
Please come in.
Good morning. Could you just spell your last name, please?
Thank you. Spelling of my first name is Deborah, D-E-V-O-R-A-H, last name is L-O-K-E. I have a very loud voice, I don't think you want me to do this. L-O-K-E. Respectfully, I just found out about this yesterday, in the sense of this pipeline thing. I only found out about the ominous spheres out in the area that we all know about now, at least here, just driving wandering away from the rez, which I've supported for many, many years of my sixty-four years of life. I only found about, out about this massive project because I took that different route home that day from the rez to buy some jewelry and some gas. I saw two large spheres that were frankly frightening. I had no idea what they were. I was stunned, to say the least. I got home right away, looked up what they possibly could be, be and thought, oh my gosh, how did this thing get put here and none of us seem to know? When I went back the next day to the rez, I asked the folks there, what are those great big circular things out there in the middle of nowhere? We don't know. We don't know. That's the answer I got. That's not acceptable. Anyways, bringing this back down to the area of Shelby Center. My family's four-generation home originally was built in eighteen fifty-five in Shelby, which I took over and completely renovated at a personal debt, uh, personal expense out of my pocket of eighty thousand dollars. My family had invested part of our family trust into what we affectionately call the project Making Shelby Great Again. It seemed after we did our repairs and renovations to the home and cleaned it up vastly, that everyone around us was taking better care of their properties as well. We cleaned up the large corner lot of the house, a large collar-beamed building, and removed approximately five twenty-ton dumpsters full of artifacts left behind by those generations before us. And we brought it back to a useful taxable, uh, tax, taxed residence, thus raising the values of all the surrounding homes in our little part of the world. And we accomplished this during the pandemic in twenty twenty. Now, let's think about the quick math assignment on what six million gallons of water actually feels like. A gallon of water weighs eight pounds thirty-four, sorry, eight pounds thirty-four ounces. Six million gallons is what you're proposing this might get to, that's fifty million forty thousand pounds of weighted water in our area. You might not think that's a big deal. However, none of the Shelby hamlet homes have village sewer service, to my knowledge. I know that my property doesn't, it relies on this little five-hundred-gallon septic tank, that's all I have. And frankly, as soon as it rains in the spring, I have to have it pumped because it's not adequate enough to handle what our environment and what, you know, global warming has done to us. Now, in a simple spring rain event, our septic tank and the beds become overrun and, and like I said, they have to be pumped. What also happens in our little hamlet, I don't know if anybody has taken the time from this group to actually go over, there's a little bridge down, uh, a little ways from where my house is and you would be frightened to cross that bridge during spring runoff. That water raises all the way to the bridge and I've seen it overflow through the years. Your plan to dump forty million, forty, or sorry, fifty million four, forty thousand pounds of water a day perhaps into a small tributary that is overflowing already for at least a month or more in the early spring, uh, time, timeframe, uh, already is going to impact our hamlet in a really bad way. I'm no scientist, but this will definitely have an impact and we also have something called sandy loam-based soil and that just holds the water. So we're in big trouble. If this thing breaks or it is just overwhelmed for whatever reason, jammed, whatever. I'm also concerned about who's gonna be monitoring the quality of this dead water that's gonna be dumped in our area. I, I just don't think there's enough oversight available, we're gonna get excuses, oh, I'm sorry, we're understaffed. How many times we hear that term? My family has relied on the substances of the wildlife, recreation, environment, water, and conservation of our priceless resources provided here in Orleans County for a very, very long time. I personally have suffered losing my thyroid because as a woman spoke earlier, she's from the Love Canal area. My family came from that area, we left that area. I attended the school that was torn down. I played in the muck, the mud, or whatever you wanna call it, that was in the soil because it was fun to play in. Turns out, that affected me. I don't wanna see this affect my fellow residents. I'm very concerned, that's why I took time out of my day to be here today. I want everyone to understand the, the consequences of this. Having no thyroid for the entire rest of your life is horrible. It puts you in, in dire need of medical care for the entire life and I just don't want that to happen to any of our friends here. I don't want it to happen to our animals that are in the Iroquois National Wildlife, uh, again, which my family has, has benefited from, uh, having that there. Also, my heart breaks for our fellow Tonawanda Seneca Nation friends. I just can't even tell you how much it affects me, that they are the ones that are suffering. Thank you for listening. Please reconsider, get another plan. This plan is just not healthy for any of us.
Thank you for your comments, they would be part of the record. Next speaker is Anna. Let the record reflect that Anna has not acknowledged that she wishes to speak. So our next speaker is Dawn, O.C. Tourism.
I'm not gonna comment.
No comment from Dawn? Okay, thank you. Ron from O.C. Tourism. You can just spell your last name.
Thank you. I'm Ron Bierstein from Orleans County Sport Fishing. Uh, there exists a world-class trout and salmon fishing destination in the Oak Orchard Creek below the Waterport Dam. And according to a two thousand seventeen New York State DEC study, sport fishing has a twenty-seven million dollar annual economic impact to Orleans County. If a forest main is constructed, then I have concerns over the effluent for the impacts on those downstream trout and salmon resources. I would wanna know that there is sufficient and routine water quality monitoring of that effluent. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. This statement will be part of the record. Uh, next looks like Linda Lumena. Sorry if I'm butchering your last name. There are Linda. No one has acknowledged an interest in speaking. How about Darlene? Darlene Rich? Again, no one has acknowledged an interest. How about John Pratt?
I don't choose to speak at this time.
I'm sorry?
I don't choose to speak at this time.
John is, uh, Mr. Pratt has expressed he does not wish to speak at this time. Thank you for your time, sir. Next we have Sarah Howard.
Just spell your last name, please. My name is Sarah Howard, last name H-O-W-A-R-D. I live in Syracuse, New York. I work for the Center for Native Peoples and the Environment at the SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry. And I'm reading a comment on behalf of my colleague who is not able to be present. I have this in written form as well and I'll hand it in to you after I read from it. Uh, I'm reading on behalf of my colleague, Dr. Robin Wall Kimmer, who is the SUNY distinguished teaching professor and director of the Center for Native Peoples and the Environment at the SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry. She's also a member of the Citizen Potawatomi Nation. And I wanna make clear that these are Robin's personal comments and don't represent the views of the SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry. I am writing in regard to the public hearing being held by Stamp Sewer Works, Inc. on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at ten o'clock in the morning. I strongly oppose the proposal to grant temporary construction easements and granting Stamp Sewer Works, Inc. the power of eminent domain over the three affected properties. I oppose granting the easements on grounds which are legal, scientific, and ethical, and I urge you to deny the proposal in the interest of your civic responsibility to the people and the environment. I would like to call your attention to the following points which support denial of these easements. Number one, Stamp Sewer Works has proceeded in bad faith, attempting to disguise their actual identity from the public. Stamp Sewer Works has failed to show that it is a quote-unquote "legal entity" separate from the developer, Genesee County Economic Development Corporation, or GCEDC. While applying for this permit, GCEDC used its name interchangeably with Stamp Sewer Works, Inc. and also Stamp Sewage Work Corporation, demonstrating that these three entities are one and the same entity, using different names to evade legal restrictions on their respective activities. Number two, Stamp Sewer Works lacks standing to carry out eminent domain proceedings. New York State law requires a sewage work corporation to provide sewage services to town residents. Stamp Sewer Works is disqualified for, from applying for permits since it will not do so. Stamp Sewer Works doesn't have the quote-unquote "authority" to exercise eminent domain because they haven't demonstrated the necessary approval of a state commissioner of transportation, the Orleans County Department of Health, or the Orleans County Legislature. Number three, use of eminent domain requires demonstration of a public purpose for private land-taking. Since this proposal will exclusively benefit only private companies, that is the tenants of Stamp, W-N-Y Stamp, the eminent domain proceedings in question lack sufficient public purpose. Stamp Sewer Works will not service any residents of the towns of Alabama or Shelby, it therefore has no public purpose. In fact, the project will have significant negative impact on the public. Number four, the pipeline has been subject to insufficient environmental review. Nearly one-third of the pipeline will pass through the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who manages the refuge, announced on May fifteenth of this year that it was suspending the pipeline's right-of-way permit. In this letter, the Fish and Wildlife Service correctly stated that the right-of-way cannot be approved until a supplemental environmental assessment is completed, as well as a new comment, public comment process is conducted. However, the Fish and Wildlife Service has since reversed this decision and approved this permit without the necessary additional evaluation and public discussion. A full, robust assessment of the environmental and cultural impacts should be completed prior to authorization of this proposal. Number five, this pipeline has been subject to inadequate consultation with the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and local municipalities. The Tonawanda Seneca Nation Council of Chiefs strongly opposes the stamp project and has submitted numerous comment letters with respect to the wastewater treatment pipeline specifically. In violation of federal law, the nation has not been granted the opportunity for a robust consultation process. Moreover, Stamp Sewer Works has not consulted fully with Orleans County, through which a significant portion of the pipeline will be constructed. Number six, the proposed action violates environmental justice and requires meaningful consultation with the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, whose treaty guaranteed lands and invaluable cultural properties would be adversely affected by the proposed destruction. In conclusion, the ecological, cultural, and moral damages that would result from this permit have yet to be assessed. A comprehensive- A comprehensive environmental impact assessment should be conducted. Respectfully submitted, Dr. Robin Wall Kimmer.[896.55][898.36][applause]
Thank you for your comments. The statement will be added into the record. And for the benefit of the court reporter, the last name is W-A-L-L-K-I-M-M-E-R-E-R. Okay, our final speaker today, if you wish to make a statement, is James Burnett. Mr. Burnett, if you could just spell your last name for the record. It speaks for your speaking on behalf of him. We would appreciate it.
Madam moderator, Mr. Moderator, my name is James Burnett, B-U-R-N-E-T-T-E. I'm a retired electrical engineer, and I speak today on behalf of the planet Earth. I worked with semiconductor research briefly and was appalled at the callousness of the institutions toward the environmental impact. I've submitted to you a page with a website from the NYSERTA Build Ready Program, which does much of the prerequisite homework for better site selection. That was one of the issues brought up today, site selection. Note, the National Wildlife Refuge System, the NWRS, is a system of protected areas managed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Department of the Interior. The easement for the six million gallons of pressurized wastewater pipeline cuts through the middle of the Iroquois Wildlife Refuge along Route 63. Please note the word "pressurized." And please examine the map on the right-hand side of the poster session. You'll note a green line going through the Iroquois Wildlife Refuge. That's Route 63, which will parallel the sewage, pressurized sewage pipeline. Since this is federal land, it is not enough for Stamp and Genesee County EDC to receive rubber stamps from the New York State DEC or the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Environmental impact statements within the county are not enough, considering the financial incentives for the extract-exploit-and-pollute model of business. Furthermore, given the assurances of safety, is there an indemnity fund in case of an accidental discharge? Not that spillage can ever be adequately cleaned up, la exot Valdez or Deepwater Horizon or the Dakota Access Pipeline. But I'm sure Stamp wouldn't object to such a fund being placed in escrow since they insist their operation is so clean and safe. We also need to see construction firm executives jumping the gun before permitting, get arrested and prosecuted. You have to wait for your permits. Another issue I have is that the effluents are not the usual wastewater with which most communities are familiar. It's not just regular sewage. Integrated circuit chips aren't just silicon, which is made out of sand. They contain dopants in order to make transistors. And dopants are things like arsenic and antimony. These are highly toxic. They will kill you. There's also phosphorus, which leads to eutrophication problems that other people have addressed. So I won't address that right now. So I invite the audience to look up semiconductor device fabrication to see what goes on in such a plant. If Stamp is so confident in their effluent quality to be discharged into Oak Orchard Creek, then why not extend the pressurized pipeline and hook it up directly to the drinking water supply of the village of Medina or Alabama? Drink your own bad medicine. Irrigate your own damn crops with it. This is a pump-and-dump scheme. We need federal environmental protections. And finally, I hope the last three holdouts fight this. And we need to come up with a legal defense fund for them to fight eminent domain.
Thank you, sir. Your comments will be part of the record along with the written submission that you handed up. That is the last person who signed up, although we recognize that maybe not everybody had a chance to sign up. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who wishes to speak? Okay, we have one taker. So if you could just state your name and spell your last name ahead of either of you speaking on behalf of the record.
So yes, I am Jason Michalski. That's J-A-S-O-N-M-I-C-H-A-L-S-K-I. Speaking on behalf of my wife, myself, lifelong resident here in New York State, as well as current resident landowner in Medina, New York. So I support all the statements that have been made in opposition. I thank everybody who is an expert and who took the time to study this, given that it was appearing to be snuck through without public knowledge. I thank the indigenous people that have been fighting alongside to save the earth. Clearly, there is going to be large environmental costs. The fact that we think that we are not going to have any impact is foolish, in my opinion. History has taught us that our own human actions have led to repeat failures in our systems despite our best efforts. And how corporate America has continually forced these through their funding, their ability to bribe politicians and create false organizations to so delude and distort reality as we see it. But the simple fact that we have to sanitize our holdout water for 24 hours from our drinking water before we put it on our plants to avoid killing microbiology or the plants themselves can tell you that we can't trust just sanitary water being pumped into our lakes. And if it is so clean, why not pump it right back into the plant to reuse it? But I'm just here to say, these corporations keep pushing against the people, keep polluting us and the environment. We are going to push back. We keep waking up, and it's glad to see all these people were here to show up despite the best efforts of kind of putting in the darkened night. So that's it. Thank you.[1332.11][1332.15][applause]
Thank you, sir. Your comments will be a part of the public record. Anyone else who did not sign up?
I signed up, but I have a letter here that I would like to read that somebody that could not be here wanted to submit as part of the comment.
Sure, allow that.
I need my glasses.
Can we just identify that person's name and spell their last name, please?
Their name is Elari H. Young, Y-O-U-N-G.
Spell the first name.
Elari is spelt E-L-A-R-I, middle missing a H. Okay. She sent this letter originally to Christian Gilibrand, and she wanted me to just read the letter, without stating that it's for Christian, but just to read the letter. And it goes, "I urge you to research the Stamp project in town of Alabama, which affects Alabama swamplands as well as sovereign land of Seneca Nation. Interrupting any natural habitat affects not only endangered animals, birds, plants, and other wildlife, it also affects and interrupts..." Hold on. "...also affects, interrupts the environment as a whole, which would have a lasting negative impact on all above-mentioned and more. How much more can be taken forcefully from nature, green space, and the rights of wildlife, many already endangered, as well as disrespecting the sovereignty of the land and indigenous people? Sovereignty, I mean, when is enough enough? All of this under the guise of clean energy and jobs. It's greed, plain and simple, and outright entitlement." She goes on to say, "I understand there's a hearing today. Please be a presence of hope for what is right. Sincerely, Elari H. Young." Thank you.[1444.52][1444.55][applause]
Thank you, Ms. Whackett. Ms. Young's letter that you just read will become part of the record as well. Seeing that there are no additional attendees who have indicated a desire to speak, there is one more. If you could just state and spell your last name, please.
Sure. It's Paul Maliszewski, M-A-L-I-S-Z-E-W-S-K-I. And I'm speaking as an ally of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and to read a portion of a letter from Janet Glocker, G-L-O-C-K-E-R. It is my understanding that the hearing on July 27 is about condemnation proceedings affecting three property owners, one in Genesee County and two in Orleans County. These three properties have not agreed to easements through their properties so that a wastewater pipeline can be constructed to carry an estimated six million gallons of fluid per day to the town of, I'm sorry, to the town of Medina. Effectively, we have two counties in conflict. Multiple governmental entities issuing statements about various rules and regulations for environmental concerns, not following their own procedures and protocols, an area of significant consequence for biodiversity and a sovereign people whose way of lives are ignored once again. I absolutely stand with the Tonawanda Seneca Council of Chiefs, who summed this up well in a letter to the Interior Secretary Deb Haaland in December of 2022. Quote, "We reiterate that the nation objects to the pipeline, to the wastewater treatment facility to which it will be connected, and to the industrial manufacturing projects proposed to be cited adjacent to the nation. We do not want our territory, people, or future generations to be burdened by the negative impacts of these projects, particularly since no studies have been conducted to determine the scope of these impacts." End quote. Thank you.[1586.84][1586.87][applause]
Sir, your statement and Ms. Glocker's letter will be a part of the record. Okay.
Wait, one more?
Certainly. If you could just state and spell your last name.
Maureen Maliszewski, M-A-U-R-E-E-N, M-A-L-I-S-Z-E-W-S-K-I. I'm going to read a portion of a letter from Xavier Kandler, X-A-V-E-R-K-A-N-D-L-E-R. "The eminent domain proceedings in question lack public purpose or sufficient public purpose. Rather, the proceedings will exclusively benefit private entities, the tenants of WNY Stamp. Stamp Sewer Works will not service any residents of the towns of Alabama or Shelby. It is therefore, it therefore has no public purpose. The pipeline will service tenants of the Stamp industry site only. These tenants are private companies, Plug Power, Edwards Vacuum, and Scanell Companies." And I'm going to skip a portion that was covered several times already by other speakers. "The pipeline has been subject to inadequate consultation with the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and local municipalities. The Tonawanda Seneca Nation Council of Chiefs strongly opposes Stamp project and has submitted numerous comment letters with respect to the wastewater treatment pipeline specifically. In violation of federal law, the nation has not granted the opportunity for a robust consultation process. Stamp Sewer Works has not consulted with Orleans County, through which a significant portion of the pipeline will be constructed. The mayor of Medina, a nearby town, opposes the project and has called for an independent evaluation of project design irregularities and emissions discovered by three engineering firms hired by the developer, GCEDC. He also points out that these engineers have found various design flaws which would increase erosion at the outlet of the wastewater pipeline, thus bringing more sentiment into Oak Orchard Creek. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you. Your comments and the letter from Mr. Kandler will be a part of the record.
Thank you for...
Sure.
Thank you.
Just accepted the written statement of Ms. Glocker. That will also be a part of the record. Okay, so seeing as there are no additional attendees who have indicated a desire to speak, I am going to conclude this public hearing. The record will close to public comment as of August 1st at 5:00 p.m. Thank you for your time. That's the conclusion of our...